Work session with a business spotlight. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you afternoon, thank you and good afternoon honorable mayor and city commissioners. Today's business spotlight is on newer restaurant that we have in Largo Fresca Vida. This business is a health conscious restaurant with organic, natural, fresh, gluten free, vegetarian, and vegan offerings. The restaurant's located at 1757 Clearwater Largo Road off of New Jersey Street across from the Bayside Court Apartments. The restaurant is owned by husband and wife Chad and Deborah and they're here today and as well as their little baby Theo. So, thank you for being here. Chad is originally from Turkey and Deborah's from Brazil and they both had a dream to pursue opening a business in Pinellas County to share their passion for healthy eating and well being with the community. So, using their background in the hospitality industry, they started their search in 2018 and they found the former Salt and Pepper Restaurant in Largo and down right off of Clearwater Largo Road and they did some facade renovations with some modern wood paneling designs. They renovated the interior space, they added an outdoor dining patio and it's all ready and available for visitors to come eat. And through the pandemic, the companies managed to forge ahead by leveraging technology and apps, online ordering, leveraging word of mouth and of course their really neat takeaway window. So, they are in a great, in a unique position because that corridor of Clearwater Largo Road is redeveloping and there's a lot of residential growth. So, thank you for being here Chad and Deborah, I have a few questions for you. Can you please tell us a little bit about your business?
Sure, thank you for inviting us first of all. It's, we're glad to be here. And thank you for the little synopsis that you gave out about our business. Yes, Deborah and I, we moved from St. Louis, Missouri about a year ago and we, we found this space, little space of ours here on Clearwater Largo Road and we worked on it for about a year and we've been very happy with the results. We've been open for about what now about four months or so? And this is Deborah, my wife and this is Theo, I should introduce them as well, yeah? So, yeah, we've been very happy, we've been blessed here. It looks like a lot of people like the healthy food, healthy options in the area. We've done a lot of support, so you know, we've been, we've been very happy.
And tell us a little bit about your menu, you serve breakfast, lunch, what's on your offerings?
Yes, so we have a large menu, although it's a small space here. We have breakfast, we have a, you know, a lot of breakfast sandwiches, breakfast wraps, we have good coffee, organic coffee from Brazil, we have fresh juice, smoothies. We also serve lunch and dinner, so basically our hours are starting about 8:30 in the morning, we close at about 7:00 PM at night. Yes, and you know, we, on the menu, we also have desserts and several other healthy options that we offer like gluten free, sugar free and things like that.
Including that trendy Delgona cough, the whipped coffee, right?
Yes, yes, coffee has been hit. My wife Deborah came up with that whipped coffee and in the beginning I told her, I don't think this is a good idea, but it turns out it's a really good idea, so it's good to listen to the wife.
Great, so you said you moved from St. Louis, so why did you choose Largo? What made you open up on Clearwater Largo Road?
Yeah, so we pretty much, one day we just hop on the car and we said, you know, let's just go for an expedition somewhere maybe a little bit warmer. So, we drove down, you know, and we were driving around here towards, you know, Clearwater, Largo, we went to San Pete and it's just, you know, I guess it's the destiny you could call it, happened to be we found this nice little space here and everything kind of aligned for us, everything worked out great for us in this place. And we looked around and we said, you know, I think we can, we can make this happen here. So, that's how we ended up here.
Great, can you tell us about some of your challenges that you're facing running a restaurant at this time?
Yes, I mean, at this time, we all know we're in the, you know, pandemic times. Getting supplies has been a bit challenging because, you know, imports and exports, our condiments, you know, certain things to actually stock and run a, you know, food business. But, you know, overall with, with a lot of the other options that we, we kind of investigated on the internet, we searched, so you know, we were able to kind of get our way around with those challenges, but mostly I would say with having a COVID, you know, finding fresh food and you know, good supplies and sustaining that kind of things that we can serve in the menu has been a little bit challenging because of that. But other than that, I mean, it's been just great. We have been doing restaurants even back in St. Louis, I would say in and out of it since 2006, 2008 or so, so we, we've got, you know, a little bit of experience on that, so I think that helped us a lot, right?
It is a difficult time.
Yes, yes, I mean, it is like she said, it is a difficult time and you know, we-
You need to be aware of the cleaning all the time, like most of the, you need to be-
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And side of, you know, when we talk about keeping the place clean, make sure we are up to date with all the codes every day, you know, before we close and before we open, we need to make sure, obviously, you know, a lot more than what we did before, that everything needs to be a lot more cleaner and disinfectant and, you know, things in that nature.
Make sure the employees are following.
Exactly, make sure, making sure the employees are following the, you know, certain rules and new regulations that we have in place. So, you know, these are the things, but again, when you like this business and when you like what you do, these are a little bit kind of nuances there, so you know, we, we love keeping it that way, but at the same time, we love what we do as well, so that, you know, that makes that little difference there.
So, what has, what have you done to kind of overcome some of the challenges and to help promote dining even for folks who may not want to sit and dine in? How have you been promoting takeaway?
Exactly, very good question, yeah. So, we utilized, we had a little window on our building here, so we utilized that building and we started offering to goes and kind of drive up to the window so that, you know, we could give to go food over the window here and we have many people that sometimes come in, they wanted orders from that window, it's quote unquote, you know, you can kind of call that, I guess, a, you know, not a fully functioned drive through window, but kind of a to go pickup window. So, that helped us a lot and other than that, we use the technology, we put option on our website where our customers could place online orders. And you know, we made it pretty easy so that they can go online order and then they can pick up from our window. And you know, we did, a lot of times, we did serve on our patio where we kind of followed the rules and the, you know, the business kind of rule out in the patio, but we made a really nice open patio as far as the weather permits, a lot of customers actually has been eating in the patio as well.
Very good. Now, can you tell us, what can Largo do for you?
Thank you, I mean, overall, like I said, we are very happy, blessed to be here, you know, we've been still new in the area and you know, in the vicinity here, so I think overall, we're good. At the moment, our biggest challenge and concern is related to the situation with the pandemic, you know, that kind of makes it challenging, but other than that, I think we're, we're okay. Yeah, biggest thing I would say, I guess, you know, for our community and it's, I think small business, not only just us, but any local, any small business out there, I think, needs the support right now, so you know, I guess we would ask everyone to support the locals, support the small business so that, you know, we can all continue and we can all, you know, I guess, get the economy into the better place than it is now.
And to continue to eat local.
Yes, exactly, yep.
Great, do the commissioners have any questions?
Any questions from anybody?
I just have a comment. We order from you guys like once a week at our office and it's awesome because they deliver and it's like within 10 or 15 minutes, it's still hot, I love the chicken quesadilla, excellent. But your food is fantastic and we wish you the best of luck and we're glad you chose Largo, we need some healthy restaurants here.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate the comment there, thank you so much.
Commissioner Holmes.
What's your number one seller?
Our number one seller, I mean, we have, we looked at our sellers every day pretty much to make sure, you know, we are up to date with our supplies, but we have many, so we have different categories. I would say, if you would agree with me, yeah, so we have nice organic bowls that we sell, we put quinoa or rice with some, you know, chicken on the top, so we call our best seller, it's Mexicali Bowl. So, that's, that's one of the, you know, top ones right now, so it, it goes with just in a nutshell, you know, in a nice bowl with quinoa rice and some chicken and some beans and avocados and, and a little bit of our own sauce on the top, so I would say that's one of the, addition to that, we have very good acai bowls. It seems like a lot of people like in this, you know, heat, hot weather, cool acai bowls seem to be going pretty well as well.
One more question, are you going to teach your daughter to be trilingual?
Yes, our, our son actually, but, but you touched on a very good point, we have another one actually on the way, so-
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you so much, I'm very happy.
And now the whole world does.
The reason I asked that is a guy that used to do my hair, he came over on a Mario boat lift from Cuba and I could not believe he never taught Spanish to his kids. I, I could, I was just dumbfounded when he told me that, I said, oh no, you, that should have been the first thing you did is you taught your kids how to speak Spanish because English was their primary, Spanish was his primary, but, but you're from Turkey and you're from Brazil?
Yeah.
So, they, so you're going to get Turkish and Portuguese and English and anything else you guys are fluent at, very good, thank you.
Exactly.
It's funny because I don't speak Turkish, but Chad speaks very good Portuguese. So, now the, our baby Theo is just 14 months old, but he can understand Turkish much, much better than I can. So, grandma, grandfather, all talking Turkish with him, I don't understand anything, but he does already.
That's all right, I can stumble along in English if I'm lucky.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, we, main thing, I think the main language spoken is probably English at home and we, we open cartoons sometimes for him and they know, they're all English, but you know, whenever, when we don't want him to do something, we'll be speaking our native languages in, in a little high pitch there, you know, just to make sure he doesn't do what we, we don't want him to do.
Chad, before I forget, could you plug your website on how folks can order from you?
Absolutely, yeah, it's, it's, it's a good idea, so our website is Fresca Vida FL for Florida, so it's Fresca Vida FL dot com and it's spelled like this, just a quick, there you go. So, in, once on our website, there's a link that it says order online, so if, you know, anybody wants to order, they can order there and they can locally pick up from our drive through window.
I just, I just wanted to mention, thank you for being here, it's good to see your faces because I, when I was in there, everybody was wearing masks, including me, so this is what I look like, it's good to see what you guys look like. I had, I, I had a Mexicali Bowl, it was delicious. A friend of mine told me that afternoon that I have to try the salmon dance, so that's going to be my next order, but, but I'm looking forward to it and the food was great and the place was really nice and welcome to Largo.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yes, and it's always good to put a face and a name together.
Right.
Thank you Chris for bringing another great business here to our meeting.
Thank you mayor, thank you Mr. and Mrs. Austin, Chad and Deborah, it was great to have you and speak with you.
And tell, tell Theo we said hi too.
Okay, we will do that, it was a pleasure to see you guys and you know, hopefully later on, we'll see you again here, okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Bye everyone.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the residence assistance program.
Good evening mayor and commission, we're here to provide an overview of three programs that we are using to help residents cope with the financial impacts of COVID-19. We're going to do a tag team this evening and we're going to talk about three separate programs using at this point, three different funding sources. The first is a resident assistance program which the commission approved in May, we'll move on to the coronavirus relief funds which you'll be seeing shortly and then talk a little bit about the longer term program for CDBG. So, with, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Arrow Woodard to talk about the current program, the resident assistance program.
Thank you Carol, so as Carol mentioned, the commission approved the resident assistance program using some of our state housing initiative partnership funding to get it going, this was back in May, the program opened in June 5th and a few weeks into it, we, we quickly realized as we were playing kind of second fiddle to the Pinellas Cares Program that they were getting an overwhelmingly large amount of calls and applications coming in and so they ended up quickly backlog that Pinellas cares. So, the first few weeks for us to require people to go through that program first kind of halted our program a little bit to get started. So, we made a shift to not require that, that step in the process and that really helped open it up as well as helped alleviate some of the pressure for Pinellas cares as well if there was cases that we could help with. So, that's helped, we do have a contact that 211, so we are reaching out and making sure that we're not paying the same bills for the same clients and so forth, or letting them know what cases we've been able to handle. We have had about 205 people start applications, about 50 of those cases were not eligible, a majority of those were because they were outside city limits. There was just a few that were either not COVID related, loss of income or for other reasons were denied, but predominantly the, the big cause was if they were not in city limits and we referred them to the cares program. We've had 27 full applications come in, we've approved 14, I know it says otherwise in the memo, but every day we're trying to get through more cases, so it is, is changing daily. And we are helping with rent and utilities predominantly. I, I haven't seen any of the cases that have gone through the full process yet that are for mortgage assistance and I think the big part of that too is mortgage holders can reach out and try and get the forbearances on their mortgages at this time. We've, we've had the eviction moratoriums extended throughout which has helped give a little bit of time for these programs to roll out funding to help landlords get reimbursed. So, now we're still seeing that, that mode that is predominantly renters applying for the assistance, but we have more money available and Carol's going to talk next about our next group of funding that's coming down the pipeline to also help with rent and utility and mortgage assistance.
Hey Arrow, one quick question, how much, how much is in this account, this fund?
For the, for the state housing, we had allocated $250,000 toward it. The state money requires a lot of paperwork, it's not a separate process from our normal down payment assistance cases or rehabilitation cases, so it's been a slower go with that. The program that Carol's going to talk about next is a way that we're going to be able to kind of expedite cases with a lot less paperwork. So, we're all looking forward to that because there is, it has been a labor of love to get each one processed and get everyone's paperwork in order and help them through the process.
Okay, but for our purposes, if I'm doing the math on this, this basically has a quarter of a million dollars and it, and that's it, paperwork besides.
That's how much we have available, yes, we've awarded about 56,000 now.
Okay, thank you.
So, just as a note, that program that Arrow just addressed will sunset on September 30th and we got that program up and running quickly as kind of an interim step until some of the coronavirus relief funds came through, which we're going to talk about next. So, I'm going to actually turn it over to Bob Plute to talk about the program that you'll be seeing shortly for coronavirus relief funds, Bob?
Thanks Carol, yeah, we're actually very fortunate, there's going to be the ability to assist people past September 30th. The second program that we wanted to go over with you is a form of assistance that'll also be for renters and homeowners, but it's coming through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation which is a state agency and we've been notified by them that we'll get approximately $272,000 to assist residents that are impacted by COVID-19. With, again, with housing and utility costs, the good news is, is that the paperwork for the renters and the homeowners for the applicants is considerably streamlined. One reason for this, I think, is because we're going to have a lot less time to get the money out to people. The program's going to sunset on December the 30th of this year, so we'll, we'll have to get moving to fully utilize it. It does provide for some additional allowable uses for people and more flexibility and we're going to bring a sub recipient agreement to you on September the 1st that'll give us the ability to accept the funds. Also on September the 1st, we're going to bring to you a resolution and a set of guidelines that'll describe the program and how it will operate. So, we're excited by this, this gives us the opportunity to go beyond the program that the commission helped us set up and to kind of move through to the end of the year to assist people. And Carol is going to talk about the last item which is related to CDBG.
Thank you Bob, so the program that I wanted to address is the community development block round CV money, so it's a special allocation of CDBG monies in addition to the city's regular entitlement. We have around $330,000 that has a variety of potential uses. The thing about this money is it is available for longer term recovery activities. One of the reasons I wanted to highlight this for you is we're using our employee based community recovery team to design how we're going to deploy those, those funds. So, as part of the recovery effort, we have a multi departmental employee group who are self led and are analyzing the needs of the community and will be making recommendations on how to use this particular funding source for a little bit of a longer term recovery once the short term relief efforts have been exhausted. We will be coming back to you on September 8th for a work session and we'll get into the details of the proposed use of the funds, but I really just wanted to highlight the, the process that we're using to manage this as part of our recovery efforts. So, with that, that concludes our presentation and we'd be happy to take any questions.
I had a question about the COVID relief funds and this might have been covered, but I may have missed it. Is there, is there income qualifications or how, how is the process to get that money if somebody is having trouble paying rent or paying their utility bills? What type of qualifications will be required for them to access?
In our current program, I think we're limited to 80% of the area median income. This program will allow us to go a bit above that, up to about 120% to draw in some additional people who are clearly working class, but are also going to be impacted. And there's going to be a self certification process too that will go with, through with folks that should streamline it a bit in terms of income demonstration.
And will that, will that process be online on, on the website, city's website?
Yeah, I believe that's our intention is to do that.
We're actually able to use the same platform we do have now, it would even be the same link, once we get it operational, our, our housing software that we have, they can basically just switch over what application is available as well as all the applicants that might be in, in the queue under our current program, they can then be switched over as well to have this more expedited process, so, so the folks that are waiting don't get cut out, they, they won't have a longer process once this gets approved.
Good, Commissioner Holmes.
And hey Bob, what is self certification?
I, I, Arrow probably knows a little more about how that's going to work than I do, but it, right now, the documentation is pretty onerous for people coming in, so I don't know, Arrow, can you possibly explain that?
Sure, so through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, they have developed several template forms that we can use and one is an income self certification form. The clients will have to certify on there and explain what their COVID related loss of income was, whether it was a furlough, job loss, that sort of thing. They'll have to list out whether or not they have, you know, retirement income, any wages they get, unemployment money they get, basically they'll have to, to self disclose everything and then it will either be notarized or have two witnesses. The Pinellas cares program went, switched over to the self certification process and it's only usually used in disaster declarations. The current program we have requires bank statements, pay stubs, you name it, we have to collect it right now, so it is a little bit more of an honor system, but it will, will help expedite the process.
Is anybody checking?
We have the ability to, but we're, we basically, it's, it's more on our system, so, so if, if something looks not right, we could, we could ask for more documentation. Under the current program, it's, it's pretty onerous, you know, they have to explain what deposits were over a certain amount on their bank account to make sure they don't have extra income coming in and things like that, but that won't be the case.
All right, my last question, Carol, under this residential assistance program, you said it sunsets 30th of September, is this a fund that you use?
The resident assistance program that sunsets, we actually used our regular funding application of ship money because the cares money was not available yet. What we're going to be recommending to the commission is actually that we use the second pot of money, the coronavirus relief funds and reimburse the ship funds. The CRF funds, the 272,000 that Bob discussed are the use it or lose it funds as you said, so we need to make sure that we expedite processing of applications and, and getting that money out to the community.
Okay, well, I, I wrote down and this was being presented, you got $250,000, it was roughly in it, you don't have that much now, but it sunsets on September 30th, which generally indicates it's, you use it or you lose it by September 30th, but you're saying the other one, the Corona's relief fund, but it says down here, that goes till December 30th, 2020. So, that takes a longer period of time.
So, the, the residence assistance program, we use ship funding, we have a variety of uses for that, so we would simply return the money to the ship funds and use them for residential rehab and affordable housing development and some of the other purposes, so there's no danger with the sun setting of the first program that we would, would not keep the money, it's a part of our regular ship allocation.
Okay, thank you.
The September 30th was in the adopting resolution for it, just to have an end date for the program similar to the business assistance grants the city adopted.
Thank you, any other questions?
Um, yes, just a quick one, somebody had asked me about, um, so this, this does say city, Largo city limits, so that's not like the entire border of Largo, like, so the people that are in the county inside, in Largo, they're not eligible for any of this, correct? It's just city people that are in the city of Largo.
That's correct and Pinellas County, St. Petersburg and Clearwater also got-
Kind of what I told them, but I was like, okay, I'll just ask to make sure, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, I think this will go a long way to help folks that, that need some help right now from being laid off or furloughed or whatever, so, so thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
Next up, committee reports, anything from Forward Pinellas?
No, we don't, no, we don't, don't have any in this.
Okay, and then Pinellas continuum of care?
Um, yes, I have a couple of things, so the point in time findings are out, if you go to the website, the homeless leadership alliance website, it'll have all the information of what was the data that was collected during the point in time count in January and also we had a big announcement at our meeting that Susan Meyer- And also we had a big announcement at our meeting that Susan Myers will, who is the CEO for Homeless Leadership Alliance will be retiring. So they are in on the lookout for a new CEO if anybody's interested or knows of anybody. So that's our, our big announcement this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from Suncoast League of Cities?
Just a couple of things, Mayor. The next Suncoast League of Cities meeting will be on the 28th, August 28th. It's, I'm not sure what it means. It's a virtual meeting, but it's hosted by the city of Oldsmore. I guess you don't have to drive there, but they're going to host it. It's from 12 to 1 o'clock. And then I'll, I'll just piggyback on that, that this week on Thursday and Friday, I'll be busy with Florida League of Cities business. I have the board of directors meeting. I have the nominating committee, the resolutions committee, the regular business meeting. And then, I don't know if you'll expand on it later, but I'm, we're accepting a an award, a grant award for the, at the Florida League of Mayors portion of that. The Catalyst Award, Catalyst Grant, I'm sorry. You know about that one, Mayor?
I do. I don't know all the details, but I do know about it.
Yeah. So anyway, really the, the point is we, we probably all the rest, all of us would be down in South Florida this time of year for Florida League of Cities Conference and I'll be doing it all online Thursday and Friday. I'll give you the results next time.
Thank you. And I know I went a little bit out of order. I skipped, I skipped the next agenda item, but we'll go ahead and finish our committee stuff and then get back to that. PSTA, anything for that?
Yes, sir. We we had a meeting, I believe, two Tuesdays ago is my, or Wednesdays ago, excuse me, was my, my first meeting with PSTA. We approved a $22.9 million construction project for Bus Rapid Transit through St. Pete, South Pasadena and St. Pete Beach. That'll travel along first half north and first half south, which will be a fantastic program for, for those there, for that area down there. As well as we approved a autonomous vehicle shuttle that's going to run in downtown St. Pete, which is, in my opinion, pretty interesting. It's almost completely autonomous. There will be an operator there just in case, you know, anything were to go wrong, somebody can take over the controls, but other than that, it will run by itself. And it's going to run along the waterfront near the pier from North Straw Park down to the Dali. And that, that's going, it's just a short demo program and it's going to run from middle of November through February, middle of February. So if you have opportunity, I'm going to check that if you're interested in it. Absolutely. Check out. That's all I have for the PSTA.
Thank you. And Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, we had a meeting yesterday. It was a hybrid meeting. There was some people there. The rest of us were virtual. The main item that we discussed was Project Phoenix. Some of you may remember that Project Phoenix was a, was a made up hurricane, counted five hurricane that hit the Tampa Bay area and the impacts that we might expect to see. So the Tampa Bay Regional, Regional Planning Council put together Project Phoenix 2.0, the recovery, which talks a lot about primarily small business recovery in the wake of a major hurricane. It was a, it's a great 10 minute video. If it's okay with you guys, I'd like to show it at an upcoming meeting or work session. It's a, it's a very good media, video. And whereas the initial Project Phoenix was mostly made up stuff. This was actual footage from Hurricane Michael up in the Panhandle and it was talking to people that, that had their, their businesses kind of devastated from that hurricane and, and what they experienced right afterwards. So I'd like to show that to you all. And then maybe if we, maybe we could have some type of virtual meeting with business, small businesses in Largo. Maybe our emergency people can get together with our economic development people and put together something on, on Facebook or something so that they can watch this video and get some information about how, how recovery might be after a major hurricane. We haven't had one since, I think, 1921. I don't think any of us were here then. So not Henry shaking his head. So, so, but it's important. It's not, it's not, it's not what they say. It's a, it's not when, or it's not if, it's when. At some point, a hurricane is going to hit us pretty seriously. And I think we have to be ready for it. Next, we'll move on to item number three, which is budget direction.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Okay, awesome. So we're here this afternoon to continue our conversation on the FY '21 proposed budget. So the city manager's proposed budget was released on July 1st and the City Commission and Finance Advisory Board held a joint work session on July 10th to learn about the strategic investments included in the budget. At that time, the city commission requested that the Finance Advisory Board provide feedback on three specific things in addition to the duties outlined in the establishing resolution. Those three things were to, you all asked them to review the changes that were made to the five year CIP as a result of COVID funding restrictions and whether or not the fiscal year '21 changes seemed appropriate. You also asked them to look at revenue diversification in the general fund. And then there was a request by Commissioner Robinson to look at the unfunded crime analyst position in the police department. So on July 27th, the board met to discuss all of these things. The proposed service level changes included in the budget, the proposed property tax rate and other utility rate increases and the effectiveness of the budget as an overall communications tool. So at this time, I'd like to ask Bronson Oatsop, the FAB chair, to join us to present the board's recommendations and take any questions from the city commission. So Bronson, you might have to unmute. We don't see you or hear you. Okay, so we don't see or hear Bronson right now, so I'll just help us move along. And if he shows up, if his technology issue gets resolved, we'll let him chime in. So I'll just help him out here. And so I'm going to have to look at another screen really quick. So regarding the, the proposed budget as a communications tool, they did say that it was an effective communications tool. And as you know, we did have a few board members that were new this time. So they really felt like the new budget layout and everything effectively communicated the information that we had proposed for the strategic priorities. So that was great news. So they were able to have a really robust discussion about the items in the proposed budget. We had, you can see those in the minutes that are attached to the memo. So regarding the, regarding all of the initiatives overall, they did recommend to approve the, the city manager's proposed budget. As proposed, they didn't make any removals or suggestions to remove things from the proposed budget. And then regarding the tax rate discussion, the recommendation was to support the tax rate of 5.5 mils as included in the proposed budget rather than the 5.62 mils that was later proposed by the city manager and ultimately approved by the city commission as our maximum tax rate going into the budget adoption. Anything to capture the essence of that in the minutes? It was not a unanimous decision. It was a, I believe, a four one because we had five members present. So there was some discussion that it seemed to have a very level fund balance at the 5.5 mils. So perhaps it isn't necessary at this time to go to the 5.62 mils or stay at the 5.62 mils, but it is, there was some dissent among the board members and they did communicate that if we don't do the 5.62 and we continue to see revenue losses as a result of COVID, how will we ever tackle any of the unfunded things that we have in our capital improvements program that require general fund funding? So that was kind of the overall essence of the board. And do I hear Bronson here?
Hi, Merity. I'm sorry. I was having some technical difficulties. I had to re-log in.
That's okay. So I just left off at the tax rate discussion. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that. Otherwise, the other thing on the list is the crime analyst position.
All right. So, um, yeah, I'll go ahead and talk about that. So as far as the, the police crime analyst position, the board thought that that was a good idea because of minimal impact to the, to the budget, to the fund balance. But it was, it seemed to be a very vital and useful position for, for the police department. So we did vote to recommend to fund that in this year's budget.
Okay. And did you want to add anything on the tax rate? I'm not sure if you.
Um, I'm not, because so I had to log out, log in, so I'm not exactly sure. What I was gonna say about that is the board did recommend to support the millage rate of 5.5 mils. That was the original recommendation that came in the budget and not the, not the city manager's revised number. The board talked about that. And one of the, kind of the overarching things that we talked about this meeting, which was very similar to our, our last discussions in the CIP, is just a lot of uncertainty with COVID and how it will affect everyone. And we thought that the 5.5 rate would still allow the city to take care of, of these things that they had laid out in this budget and not really have too much of an impact on the fund balance. So it would be a little bit lower, but if you look out at the projections over a couple of years, it would still stay around 14%. And so that was kind of viewed as a good compromise between having a flex, flexibility with maintaining some fund balance. But keeping, you know, not allowing the, not raising the tax rate too much to allow for uncertainty with anything that could go forward with COVID-19.
Okay. Thank you, Bronson. Are there any from the commission to the FAB chair?
Any questions for Mr. Otoff? Commissioner Carol?
Mayor, I don't really have a question. I'd just like to thank the Finance Advisory Board for taking that information back, those requests and specifically addressing each of those issues. I don't know if now's the time, but I'm going to go ahead and say it now that I've been looking over the documents and the impact on the homeowner and property owner in the city of Largo and our, on our millage rate discussion. Just for the record, it's my intent to support the 5.62 as we go forward. And I know we'll have a vote on this later, but I just want to get that on the table. Based on the fact that, you know, we, we reexamine the budget and the millage rate each year and our projections are going out to the five years. And I want to keep our eye on the ball as far as the fund balance goes. Borrowing from Kim Adams, projections are not predictions and I, I want to, I want to keep this going in the right direction. So thank you, Bronson. I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you. And I'd second that. Thanks to Bronson and the rest of the Finance Advisory Board for, for discussing this and give us some, giving us some valued inputs. Any other questions for Bronson? Any questions for Merity or Will?
I, I'm sorry, Mayor. I was just looking at the notes here. So Bronson, you, you made a comment about we need to keep an eye on the commercial, being commercial properties. And it, it, we did give a, Will gave a, an annual cost of $11 between the two rates for the whole year. Do we have a difference in approximately what the commercial difference would be? I know they don't get homesteaded, but I was just wondering about commercial property because that's really not mentioned.
That's really based on each individual commercial property even more so than residential because their maximum increase is capped at 10%. So I would suspect that most businesses are probably seeing that full 8.19% increase in property values. So that's what we estimated on. The official value for each commercial property, I think, comes out a little bit later on in the process, but when the 10 businesses go out, they would see that. But it is maxed at that 10% range.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Holmes?
Merity, what's the budgetary impact of hiring the analysis for the police department?
So the crime analyst in the first year is an $80,000 impact and then the recurring, because in the first year, you got to buy, buy technology and, you know, workstations and all that kind of thing. And they're recurring. A little over $70,000.
All right. Well, I'm all in favor of adding that position. By the way, as far as the millage rate is concerned, my, my concern is always about the commercial. Because if you look at the chart here, because of the homestead that homeowners do get, and then some of us have the save our home cap where we are really, I love it. But anyway, it's the commercial guys that are really getting hammered on this thing. And that's why I, I'm inclined to go with the 5.5, but that's just my own opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Can I just have a comment, Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
I just wanted to, you know, real quick, just discuss the, the crime analyst position. If you guys read the minutes from the meeting, I'm sure you were able to see my comments. I don't have anything new to add to that, but I, I really do believe that, you know, adding this position will, will bring some into the intelligence based predictive policing. I said it before, I've said it to the chief, I, I'm fully aware that our officers are not sitting around looking for things to do. They are all out there working hard every single day. But I think by, by adding this position, we can, we can again, be a little bit more predictive and efficient with our policing. And I, you know, help build some capacity as well. So again, I fully support the position. I would like to see it in, in this budget and happy to discuss it more if anyone would like to.
Any other questions? Commissioner Carol?
Yeah, I would just add to what Commissioner Robinson and Commissioner Holmes have said. I'm sure there's, I, I'm confident there's support for this position, but I also think it's important to remember this was a position that existed before and we lost it. And under the concept of working smarter and not harder and directing our resources where they need to go, certainly with everything going on across the nation with the way leasing is conducted. It's very smart to have a crime analyst in place.
Thank you. I would, I'd like to just ask about, if we could, when, when we bring this back, I know Commissioner Holmes stated his desire to look at the, the the current millage rate. And I, I'd like to, so I'd like to see that number, how that's different than the five, or the 5.62. And I'd also like to know what the value between 5.62 and 5.6 would be. So how much is two tenths of a mil to the, to the budget? Couple of things that would, that would be an increase or a decrease in the millage rate. It would, it would make things a little more rounded when we're discussing things. And and I think we'd still be able to get the crime analyst and, and forward and kind of reevaluate next year. This budget was presented to us with, with the number that's lower than 5.62. So I'd like to maybe if we can have a number that's a little bit lower than 5.62 and 5.6. I feel like I'm one of our, one of our current speaker, frequent speakers that keeps saying numbers over and over again, that we haven't seen in a little while. I'm not going to say any names out loud. But, uh, so i, if we could bring that number back when we start talking about the military, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Woody, one other question. I, I'd like to see what it looks like for commercial accounts. I mean, just like with Holmes, there's no such thing as the average house, but in the city of Largo, what impact do these property tax rates have on commercial property? Especially considering that they're going to get the automatic.
do these property tax rates have on commercial property, especially considering that they're going to get the automatic valuation increase up to probably the eight between eight and ten percent?
Well, there is.
Will happen, which is
Yeah, on the.
I've got this stuff here, but it's homesteaded.
Right, on on page seventeen of eighteen on the package, there's a there's a commercial property on East Bay Drive. I don't know. It's a relatively decent sized commercial property because its value is eight point six five million dollars. So the property taxes on that is about forty-eight thousand. Currently, with the rolled back rate, that would go to forty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-four. The proposed budget rate is about, it looks like a little over two thousand dollars more than that. So it'd be a one percent increase, is that right? Might be a four percent increase. So it'd be a two percent to yeah, it'd be a four percent increase on this on this particular property. But every property, as has been stated a couple of times, now, these these properties can't be homesteaded, so they're not held held at an artificial number. They are limited on how quickly they can increase in value, but it's a much bigger threshold than residential than homesteaded residential. So so this is just one example. You can probably look at a ton of different commercial properties.
And we can pull some smaller commercial properties and see what that looks like and also look at the tax value summary and see if I can pull an average commercial value and do an estimate on that, too.
Mayor, I would just add one thing, and I understand the discussion and I and I do value, you know, what you and Commissioner Holmes have said about something other than five point six two. It's just I want to keep in mind that we we have a stated objective of where we want that fund balance to be. And I continue to reflect on that as we, you know, we've been in pretty good financial shape because we made some tough decisions a couple of years back, several years back. So however we get there, I'm fine with it. I just know that the this discussion happens every year and these projections are out for five. So I just want to make sure we're on an upward trajectory. Thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree. I also, in our trajectory or in our forecasts, we forecast, I'm not sure the exact number, but I think it's a six or a seven percent increase each year. And this is more than that. So so sticking closer to that projected forecast, I think, is important. Now, I've talked about whether, over the years, I've talked about when, and I think Kim Adams talks about this a lot, too. You don't want to overreact up or down based on on what's happening currently. You know, if pension funds are overfunded, we don't necessarily want to want to, you know, give a whole bunch of stuff because that has got us in trouble in the past. At one point, our pension was was overfunded, so we so we slowed down our contributions and ended employee contributions. And then we got in the position that we're in now where it's underfunded. So, you know, I I think that we should stay the course long term. And if that means changing the millage rate a little bit closer to the the projected percentage that we've been kind of agreed to over the last several years, then I'm I'm fine with that. Doesn't mean that we have to go exactly to six or seven percent. But if that's the the number that we expected to have, unless we're changing service levels and this increase of a crime analyst is increasing our service level, and I think it's important so that we should consider that as we're deciding that percentage or whatever. But but unless we're changing service levels, I think we're able to kind of keep to the percentage that we planned on. Now, I will say that we don't we don't know what's going to happen with COVID. And I know that's the reason that that we went from how the numbers are backwards, five point five to five point six two or whatever. So that's certain. There's a lot of issues at play here.
So that's a really great segue into our next segment here, which is talking about the reconciliation changes because there were some things I was gonna have a look over just so that we're on the same page in terms of the five-year impact and related to COVID that we're gonna talk about. So I'll turn it over to Will.
Thanks, Mary. So we did cover a few of the things on my list here already. So everyone did receive a copy of the general fund with the new five point six two tax rate included, as well as the reconciliation list items. On the revenue side, there were a few other adjustments that I just wanted to highlight based on updated information that we've gotten over the last few months since we first prepared the projections for the proposed budget. We did have to make some adjustments to state shared revenue, particularly the half-cent sales tax, the motor fuel tax, and some of our other shared revenues revising them down over the five-year period based on the recent sales tax collection numbers from the state. And so overall, the impact across the five years for that was just shy of about a million dollars. And we also had some S reductions in estimated twenty in the current year as far as revenue collection in those same funding sources as well as electric franchise fees. We did see an increase in electric utility taxes just one time from our initial estimate. But again, the same reductions that we projected out over the five years for the shared revenue as well as a reduction in the electric franchise fees we're seeing in our estimated twenty numbers here as well. The reconciliation list has a number of just adjustments and cleanups and corrections from the proposed budget that are highlighted there. A few additions that we just wanted to note included rebudgeting the Bayhead project and the disinfection tank coating project. So when you see that total summary number of expenditures and FY twenty-one on the reconciliation list, there are a couple of big capital projects there that are just rebudgeted from the prior year playing into that. We also had the addition of some staffing support for the virtual learner childcare program at two of our recreation centers, and that's in in response to, you know, some COVID-related service needs. There are also a few more changes that we know will be coming in advance of the first reading. When we come back to you in September, we will be rebudgeting the West Bay Drive Trailhead project into FY twenty-one for execution in the next fiscal year. There's also going to be a small change for emergency management-related food purchases for emergency food for if we activate for an event. And finally, some updated city hall design and C Mar numbers to bring and prepare for for next year. So those are a few of the final changes that we know will be coming in addition to what we've presented to you here.
Thank you, Will. So really, at this time, we're ready to take any specific direction from the commission. You know, it sounds like I should prepare the tax rate ordinance without a particular millerate at this time so that you can decide at first reading between five point five and five point six two. Does that sound like a good plan there? Okay, and then I just need to know consensus on whether or not to add the crime analyst position into the proposed budget at that time as well.
Yes.
Head nods.
Yeah, I see nods all around.
Yes.
Even Henry nodded just a little bit.
Non-voting member, of course, yeah. Okay, and then were there any other changes that the commission would like to propose before we go into the first reading of the budget?
The only other thing that I would recommend is that if you could bring back, just plug in five point six.
Yep.
Straight five point six.
Yeah, we'll we'll bring the general fund as like a calculator and you can see all three militaries at once instead of three versions of it in a packet. That might be a little bit much for y'all, but.
Understood.
Okay.
One question, Woody.
Sure, Commissioner Holmes.
This is for Henry. Henry, is there any integration with the county and the West Bay Drive, the literal redevelopment of West Bay Drive and the West Bay Drive Trailhead project? Is there any integration there between the county and us?
No, the county is not participating in that project, but I believe we are using some CRA funds as part of that project.
But then I'm going to go back and re-ask a question. Whatever happened to that West Bay Drive repaving deal with the county where we were going to fork up an additional million dollars to get certain things done? Haven't heard anything on it.
I I just heard an update on that within the last couple of days. The I believe they're looking at design in fiscal year twenty twenty-one and construction in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Yes, it's farther out than than I think it was originally discussed. And as we get as they move into that actual design phase, we will we will share that information with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions concerning the budget?
Good job.
Great job.
We're starting up the special meeting Thursday. Thanks, everyone.
And we'll skip board committee meetings because I covered that earlier. We'll go items from the commission. Commissioner Carol.
I have nothing to share, but I do have a question. I don't know if Henry can answer it. Is there any update on the PBA contract?
Yes, we have reached tentative agreement with the PBA. They are scheduling a ratification vote of their members. I don't think it's occurred yet. So we'll be bringing that to you. I believe the first meeting in September for ratification by the city commission.
Thank you. I have nothing.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Probably a question for Henry. Can we get an update of the triangle progress?
Yeah, I can give that to you right now. I had a a meeting this afternoon with or late this morning with staff. We are having some ongoing issues with the contractor completing that project. That the prime there's a punch list of items that need to be taken care of. The primary issue is there are some electrical issues that have not been accomplished by the by the contractor. We are giving the contractor until the end of this month to correct the issues. If they do not have the project completed by the end of this month, we will move to use the retainage that we have on the project to hire another contractor to finish the work.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, and thanks for asking that question. It was on my list, too. Commissioner Robinson.
That was my list.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
I told Henry I wasn't going to ask him about the West Bay loft, so I'm not doing it.
All right, Vice Mayor Hope.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Fanger.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
And I, everything I had was covered already. So Mr. Schubert.
Everything I wanted to say has already been asked.
Very good. Action items. Looks like they're still on mute, but I don't I don't believe there were any. Does anybody have an action item you can recall?
Oh, I have one. Can you hear me, everybody?
Yes.
A request to show that video on Project Phoenix at an upcoming regular meeting or work session and also schedule a virtual Facebook meeting with the video for the business community.
So so definitely the first one. The second one, you know, check with check with the our emergency folks and and economic development folks. And if there's something something that we can put together, I think that would be great. I know they're trying to get that video in front of over five hundred businesses in Penneola's camp, well, in the region. So I I think that'd be good to get it to our businesses here in Largo as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, thank you for all. Thank you for being here and meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.